to continue his presentation until our meeting in January. For folks, I'll turn it over to you for item two, which is another comprehensive plan. I appreciate you guys.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. And thank you to the county council for allowing us this opportunity to staff this opportunity to just give you a brief and aware of where we're going with this. And first, before I get started, as well as some thank you, thank you all for being available because we're really interested in this comprehensive plan. So what I really wanted to talk about, if you keep reminding that in May of 2022, that we actually adopted our comprehensive plan, that's what we adopted, adopted this plan. And here's what, if you've been around a while, when we got planned, you see this all the time, we're planning, they're called Anderson plans, but we make plans, but do nothing to go plan. But I want to assure you, this is not just a plan, this is a roadmap, roadmap to success of Anderson. So I wanted to give you all an idea, let you know, when we started this plan, one thing that we sit down and staff talk about, as we do this plan, this is a working plan, even when it has been processed. So I wanted to give you an idea, the implementation phase of our comprehensive plan, this is what it looks like. And I will show you all what we have done to make sure these things have been implemented, these things are coming, come to fruition, or we are working toward them being that. But keep in mind, this is a continuous process, not just a five-year plan, we're talking about this far to the 20, to 20 years. And every five years, you know, we got to continue to refresh this thing, because how can you get to where you're going if you don't have a map to get? And you have to continue to refresh that now. So I just want to go back and see those areas that we're, we're, we should be concerned about by an animation plan. That's where we are. So as you go through this, it's just going to be a quick, really the bottom of that, and I'll let you know this next day. The big critical issue, that's the confetti, that's what we've done, those are the things just at, at the grants. Look at what we have done, look at how this fits in, and look at what, where we are with that, when we put the grant in place, since then, look at what we've done. And struck down to, these are the things that we, this is our roadmap, this is how we follow our roadmap. Understanding that, that's what catches your eye, continue on Dave's research. Looking at capital projects, those are the things that we've done. And it just explains, committed to enhancing the lives of residents, that's what, that's, that's what we're supposed to do, that's the job that we have. You look at all those things that we've done within that time, and those things that are some of the most have come into fruition, these are things that have actually been done, thanks to staff. Go down to that city market, again, look at the Lakeview Park, the Satcha Clinic, just on and on and on. And I, you got to give credit to those too, the museum, because we fast-tracked, uh, what, what, uh, what Adam did there, we fast-tracked that forest factory. And those are the things that we did, thanks to the citizens, we were able to get that done at this time. That's what I'm saying, in about two years' time, this is what we have done. Using this plan, ensuring that this was a part of the plan, how we're going to have this together, that's what it's all about. And this, I thank you, Jackson, for giving this, this is the matrix that you're using to follow us, things that's completely with the check, ongoing, these are habits to continue and build on. And, and progress, with the progress and progress are underway, and work has been done, evacuated staff, we're still looking at it. Those are just icons to let you know, as you can check, when you're looking at this, as it follows the power point, sort of take where we are in the process. So the biggest things that wanted to keep thinking that we had to get done was zoning, and hard for us to move forward, and hard for us to come up with some type of plan. And we have been working on that zoning since we started. Now, here's the thing that we had to make sure, everybody says it's a time table on zoning, but sometimes you can't rush things if you want to be part of it. So what we used to talk about, thank you to the planning commission, together with the outside, and with our consultant, let's sit down, let's walk forward, let's make sure we get input, let's make sure we're doing it the right way this time. So we don't have any problems, we work together, and even in that process, thank you so much to this world, we even brought some people down to train the trainers, to bring our people in and make sure everybody's up to speed, with a cap zone all back, we responded to it, it came down. So we're going to get this thing right, we're almost there. But when we get there, everybody is going to be, this is what's going to benefit Anderson, not just certain portions of Anderson, but all Anderson. I'd like the process they're taking, and now you tell me, we should be seeing something in January that's coming before the council. I'm looking at all three types, looking at staff, looking at management.
January.
January, not here, again. Yes, sir. So you should have something that's coming to you, that's zoning, and what this does is just open us, so when people start coming here, we got it the way it is, and everybody's speaking the same language. And that's what we're looking at, it's almost, almost there, you see the process that they're using. Again, Tony, Jason, as well, do you want to say anything about playing that we should know? That is the key, that is the key, talking to man, talking to council, that is the key, let's get this zoning out the way, because y'all know how we got all the questions, what are we zoning for this, how are we zoning that? Keep in mind, the club was included in this, so we're not just saying, we're calling it that, they have part of this zoning process as well, they were part of this, they were part of the conversation, so that's how we move. Because again, it's the city of Anderson's responsibility to make sure all that land is incorporated. Mobility and corridors, those things that we're working on. I look at how many rules we paid and all the things that we've done, to me, our seven major drainage projects have been completed. This is, this is an airport, we're actually working constantly on that airport, how to bring it to something that's going to be useful to us. So I'm not going to start to tell us by reading all this for you, I want you to just take a chance, type of, look at those things that have been done, and we will continue to do those things. Rebuilding, uh, Quinton Avenue, we're already signed with a consultant to come in and look at that. But we're not just, we're trying to make sure not only Quinton, but even when you come off and go to Noble downtown, and all those streets that's connected, we're trying to find somewhere of all that end rate, so it looks all the same way. But keep in mind, this is not going to happen overnight. This is where you're going to see those key things, is that we've got to work our five-year capital improvement plan, it's got to be a working document. You can't just say, I'm putting a plan together, and you're not using it. So every year, this just starts off the process of what it's going to look like, what we expect from it. Then the next year, how do we stop this process happen? That five-year plan just continues to work until we get to where we want to get to. Keep in mind, we do not have a lab of plan where we can run this on our booth, it's not going to happen that way. What has to happen, we have to be patient, we have to be realistic, and we have to make the plan work. And that's what we're going to do, long as we keep working our five-year capital improvement plan, I assure you, and continue to refresh that, we will get there. And those are the things that we're looking at now, and next. Other improvements, I want you to look at some of the things that have been done at our playground, our pools, we'll talk, we'll continue to talk about this as we move around. We'll talk about physical improvement, again, this is what we did when we started our comprehensive plan, we asked the public, what do you want to see? And that's what we're trying to do, some of these things that you've done, maybe you've done it, when you look at it, but it's still a part of the different areas, and those are the things that I'm continuing to do, and continue to work on. Am I having anything while I'm moving? Because sometimes I bring that dress on, I don't know. Uh, next. Now, we're talking about natural and cultural resources. Some of those things that you see ongoing, the only thing you're going to see check, continue to pursue, recycling, featuring home pickup service included, that says check. But that's the only check we're working, some of those things we've put in place, but we're still working to make, see if we can make those things happen. One thing I want that excites me, like if you see the new cardboard, uh, the drop-off points, have everybody seen those, the golden springs, and also we have one at the city, etc. Here's what our public works has done with the staff, and they come up with ideas. We think we're going to be able to make those trailers ourselves, with finance helping us out to get the trailer, and then fabricate the, the, the containers that go in there. And we're going to fabricate ones for plastic, and then others, so we're going to put one of those in, in every wall, for plastic and for cardboard. And that's what we're looking at doing, which is coming into view. So those things, we're working on those things, and we're getting those, these things that are happening, these are listed on our, our implementation phase. All those things are working, and you see, like I said, the only thing that we can say we checked is the recycling, but we're still working on that, but the rest of it, they are moving along as well. And then you see, expansion of national rest and historic districts, check. Continue strong support for the city museum gardens, and including Greenway, are we helping the museum happen? We're doing those things with the museum, with our, we're talking about getting now, we're looking on the trails that can get from 21 to the museum. We're looking at how the trails can be hooked up to other trails at the museum, even on the claws and other places. We're working on things that where we can hook up to museums, so Adam is working intricately with all that, trying to get those trails working right now. Thanks to JSU, thank you for being in the business, great, from JSU, we're working those things right now, so those things are happening. When they brought up that interstate, yes, they were, but we were working that before we even started working this plan. And then, and then else? Downtown, a lot of things going on downtown, I don't know, do you all see the difference in downtown, where we kind of, some of the things that we're doing? But keep in mind, we haven't not finished yet, you look at, and keep in mind, and don't forget that 15th Street area, a certain area of 15th Street is considered as downtown as well, and we're also working on those as well. And you just look at some little things, the city market, which is very exciting, with, we, we promised a long time ago that we would have a permanent plate for the fall of July, we got it. But there's so many other things that can happen downtown as well. Look at 12th Street Park, those things that you look to where people can come, excuse me, 11th Street, 11th Street Park, those are where people will come and gather, and at that gathering place downtown, we're talking about the entertainment district has been put in place. There's so many things that we're doing, then you look at Main Street, 60 new businesses, I mean, 61 private, property, private property investments worth over $6.17 million. Volunteer hours, all those things, the completion of Low Street Park, creation of downtown entertainment, entertainment district, and we're being recognized statewide. Called before you became Mr. How many awards did we get from downtown? Two. Now, how many we have, and you see now, we have 10, and we still continue on. And it's not one of those things that's just given, it's things that we've earned, because we're doing those things in order to be awarded for it. And that's what those are things that are happening, why? Because we understand the importance of a down, of value, and value of downtown, we understand that, that was a part of our comprehensive plan, that's what the citizens were asking for, that's what we've done. And we will continue to do that, again, I say, we still following the roadmap, it may take us a little more time, but we're going to get there. Housing, neighborhoods, economic development. You see those things that we're working on, and you look at that long list, I'm going to give you time, because I want you to read that, what we are, the things that we've done, and I want you to ingest that, and just look at it and see where we are. And understand where we still could be, and we just, um, simplified for right now. Those are the things that have happened, and if you understand the comprehensive plan, what was supposed to, those things that shouldn't have happened, and should happen, look how we invested, and how we made it worse. One thing that's great about it, I talked to the Public Housing Authority this morning, and the other, what, 13, is it 13, 12, 13, they said, developed apartments for.
I think they said they're going to make it to 14.
14, 14 apartments, talk to them today, you should start seeing some action going on us in January, talk to Brad today, those are coming in January. So by the end of next year, you're going to see more apartments across from where we are now. And keep in mind, those apartments are going to be not just for low income, we're talking about veterans, that we're looking at veterans, and also how we can embed the homeless population through those apartments as well, are you correct?
Is there any data prior to 2020 on how many business licenses were issued in comparison to the 820 that we had in 2022 and 2023?
That's what you're so important, young man. This data, inside that data, if you have, all this data that we're talking about, that is in there, there's a pen in it, that tells all that, what it was, what, how far we're going to go next.
It's a lot higher, uh, since 2015, I think we have the license records at least, between me and Jessica, so, um, yeah, the last two years have been real good.
I'm a bit curious about 26, 2021.
Yeah, if you go to the very back of what you have in front of you, it should have it somewhere in there, yeah, when we get there, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is what, the thing that maybe some of this happened, and I put this line up here, for instance, I want you to see, this is a key thing. So some people, people said the pandemic was a curse. To us, it was a little over the curse, a blessing in disguise as well. Because a lot of those things that came from the pandemic, and one of the things, we were very proactive when the pandemic hit us, and we were thanks to our finances and others, we did some pretty smart things, thanks to the council and others listening. And this is what we will do, that $13.29 million that we got from those funds that was allocated to Anderson, this is how we use it in order to make sure this plan worked. If you look at public police equipment, Satcha Clinic, chief of dogger trail, Golden Springs, all those things, we use those funds to make this, just what they were intended for. And we had to make sure, and you can see there, we had to make sure they were done within that time limit, we have fit that, that time limit, that all the funds had to be obligated by December of 31st of 2024. We already got them obligated, but they got this spent by December 31st of 2026. And all of that fund that we've gotten, those were used, that money for, is the impact to make sure, uh, uh, quality of life, making sure that we have chain, economic development, that, that impact is there. The thing that's exciting, the dogger trail, for instance, you all, I tell you, we've been talking about the dogger trail for the lungs. I'm proud to say to y'all today, that we know on February the 10th, I believe, tell me, let me give you a time sheet, see if I got it.
January 3rd.
January the 3rd is when we're there, but February is when the bid will be opened. So what I'm saying to you all is that what we're talking about will become a fruition pretty quickly here. And by February, we should start, we should know what the bid is going to, going to be from the dogger trail. Uh, February 8th, they will have, they will open the, the open bid from the dogger trail on February 8th. And between that time, and what I'm understanding, if I'm correct, Tony, I've tried quite a few years, and I'm looking at consultants, and I'm looking at it as well. So we are almost there with the dogger trail as well. So I want to just bring this to you, you all, and just have you take a look at, your plan is not just sitting there. Anderson plans is not just sitting there, and the thing that we're looking at, as we look at this, how as we try to move, we're not looking at this just as Anderson. We're looking at it as a regional approach, how do we, in fact, reach, how do we get better, how we help each other out to be better as a whole? Those are the one of the things that we definitely want to look at, not just looking at Anderson, because I think that's one thing we're pitching on, we don't try, we're not Oxford, we're Anderson. We're not Jackson, we're Anderson, we have our own niche, but we all support each other, we all complement each other. That is the key thing that we're trying to do, like what we did with our clinic, see, that clinic, in fact, not only Anderson, it's going to impact everybody's whole region, not only that, it will help our hospital as well, so it can become better, because, again, there's an alternative that those people that don't, that unserved are going to have insurance to go to. So those are the things that we're looking at, that we're always going to help, the entire region, those are, that's, that's very important to each and every one of us. Now, this is what I want to say, keys, how do we continue this? I, I, I asked Jessica, I find this directly, I said, Jessica, how are we finding, what's, what's our condition, find us, she said, great. And I asked her this question, how do we stay there? She said, don't spend more than you're taking any. Now, now, I don't, I mean, in that, in that simple, so I, I thought to myself, don't complicate something. And so how do we stay where we are right now, it's just simple thing, we got to support our capital improvement plan. When I say support it, we got to do it, we got a capital improvement plan, we got to make sure we fund the capital improvement plan as appropriate, and it's still a fund to use properly. We got to finish, chase the grants and whatever it is, but that five-year plan has to be a working document, and it has to continue. And it's a consistently update our comprehensive plan, and it's recommended every five years, we got consistently updated back. If you don't update this now, you're going to get lost, and that's it, sometimes a road may go out, something may happen, the same thing here, we got to keep updating, updating, so we make sure we stay on course. Creation of an economic development plan, we're getting ready to do that now, we've already got somebody in place, because each time we ask somebody, and they ask us, what do you need, and they ask us this question, do they have economic development plan? Now, comprehensive plan, economic development plan, is your economic development plan in line with comprehensive plan? So these are the things that we had to make sure happened. So we're starting working right now, we're going to start that plan, so we have all the tools in our toolbox to ensure that we're going to get to the destination where we're trying to get to. Other thing, grant writing team with global reach, our fellow experts mentioned that again, one grant writer can't help you if you're trying to get more than one place. So we got a grant writing team now that have global outreach, global technicals, can reach out to other places and say, what's the best one, go sit down, we're talking, put together a strategic plan. In other words, don't chase every grant that you want to chase, you got to chase the grant that you got reality you can get to, what's best, how do we fit, do we have everything in place? Do we have everything we need to make sure we can be successful in this grant process? This is what we've done, and I think we've done some great work there, we just ended it that, and I think we'll see some fruit, results by fruit pretty soon. Engage with national audience, we had to do that, had to engage somebody so nationally, that we're not only hooked in here in the state and local, we got to be hooked in where, where there's data, where they have several money and other things like that. We've done that, we're going to make sure, in fact, we're setting a visit to go to DC in January, just to go in and have these conversations, to say, what, where we at right now, let's have this conversation, let's continue that, let's stay close again. We may not get everything, but let's, one thing I know for a fact, that it says so in the great book that I once read, you have about, because you act now. So you got to go out there, and you got to figure it out, and if you got to ask, it's all right there, tell them no, but sooner or later, somebody will tell you yes, but you got to have what you need in order to get a yes. If you're operating as a no, you're never going to get anything but a no, but if you're trying, and trying, and trying, and yes is on your, your entire, yes is on your, sooner or later, somebody will tell you yes. Promote regional collaboration with agencies such as, you know, Alabama, JSU, et cetera, et cetera. We got to have those collaborations, but again, with this, for my, my, my municipalities. We got to talk with each other, say, how can we strengthen each other, how can I help you? I mean, you look at, we talk JSU education, we're at, anyway, history and hospitals and medical, right here, and you're talking about in Oxford, what you got, you got to retail in Oxford, but how do we, we hit all three of those together? We can become a stronger entity if we combine them together and work together, instead of working against each other. Engage JSU, developing business research, economic, we are, we are continuing to do that, we do those things. And continue the partnership with our retail coach for retail group. Does anybody have anything else that you could say, but don't those things, if you follow those tools, won't those help us get where we're trying to get? Are those the things that we need to do, and those are the things, but because you're the director of council, these are the things that we're going to try to, and I think if we follow both agreements, I think our cake will taste alright. And that's, those are pretty much where I'm at, if you got some, if you got some data in there behind that, that actually can keep you up with things. Because one thing I don't want to do, I'm not just regurgitating numbers, and telling you something to look at, I'm not that type of, I don't, I don't believe in that. We got anything to substantiate everything I say in here, because that's what we're doing, we're working, we're working this plan, and all of this work is planned, because one thing I do, I tell everyone each and everything, I don't work for, I report to the council, I work for the citizens of Anderson. And we're going to work for the citizens of Anderson, and I said, I said, to my staff members as well, I supply, because we got to understand that we're doing this for the people that we serve, and I think if we use these agreements, we're going to get to where we get. And if nobody can see, they don't see how far we've come, thus far, come on, you can't see? That's my, I want to get to y'all quick, any questions, anything, any question you have, anything, and ask about, any question?
Have we, I haven't seen it, have we put this on social media, as far as these capital projects?
I want to do anything that I get to y'all.
I would really like for the community to see.
That first page is already on there, but I want it all right on there, but I'm looking at it.
But the capital project that makes, you know, what we've done, what big compensation, what's the coming 24, I think that would be critical for the community to see.
Things that are working, just to let you know, so you understand, our national park service, it's moving along. We're starting to meet, and we are actually, all four entities are going to meet in January, we're actually going to meet with the committee that's been formed, we actually, National Park Service is going to meet, the city of Anderson, and the county, and also the, the Friends Group that we're doing, that's going to be done for the Howard John Park. We're meeting, and we're talking about Congress that's catching their edge, when you get this friend group there, everybody understands you have not seen any, any, no slacks yet. But you like this friend group, we're going to be able to maybe get raised funding, and actually put some things out there so you can start seeing it, because you know how it works with federal plan. You probably ain't going to see nothing out there really tangible, for fantasy until about two to three years. But we can start right now with a friend group, and we have this conversation, what do you all want to see there? Somebody going to mention something like, what about the wall with all the free riders on the wall, and ask, wouldn't that be awesome? So it's things like that people are talking about, but without the friend group, now we're talking with the friends group, where we can actually raise the money and possibly do that. But y'all understand, you can't do nothing on federal property without getting permission from federal government, first from National Park Service, but still, these conversations are started, how do we make this happen, so somebody can actually see something here? Because if somebody can see it, and I can feel it, I can believe it. So those are the things that we're starting looking at, possibly doing this with.
Stephen, I think too, the council, your announcement about the letting of the chief of dogger trail.
Yes, yes, the speech about, like, our, our, excuse me, February 8th, the bid will be out February 8th. January the 3rd, that's when he let it, but I'm trying to ask a bid, the bid will be turned in to be evaluated on February 8th. That's what we have.
And that's, that's a big deal. It's been 28 years in the making. Look, I, I really appreciate this, I mean, it was obviously key for Anderson's future economic vitality, did this plan be developed and adopted, or is it more important to the execution upon this plan? And Sierra, you're right, people need to see this, because I think people will be surprised at the staggering level of progress that's been made in an 18-month period, so thank you, folks, and staff.
Please put the paving list on there, please.
And Peter, mind, as I say, it's possible. And I couldn't, I, I must say, what's been so wonderful about it is how the relationship with the, um, planning commission, and the staff, and we're all speaking one language now, we, I think we, I think. And, and Mr. Russell and I have dug a whole lot, signed, we've buried all that nonsense away, and now we're moving fast, and I really appreciate her for that, bringing us together, that board coming together, and y'all doing this, and we're working together on this. Because if we're not speaking the same language, how do we expect everybody else to speak the same thing? So I think we're headed in the, I, I, I know we're headed in the right direction, and the whole thing about this plan, whether Steve Don folks is here, or whether this council is here, what's up, anybody should be able to do if they want to work, and they're too certain, pick up this plan and continue on. I, I like the analogy of the relays in life, because everybody, if you pass that baton, everybody got to run it over it, but you got to grab it, you got to run as hard as you can in order to get to that, to that spot. If everybody has dropped that baton somewhere, it's too late to pick it up, we got to be able to pass that baton, and then the only way you can pass that baton is that you're going to practice on what you're going to do, so everybody understands how you're going to pick it up, understand when you're going to take off on your leg. I think this is what we're doing here, now everybody knows what your responsibility is, and everybody, if that top of town is passed to you, you run as fast as you can, so we make sure you get to your destination.
Thank you, any other questions or comments?
Thank you very much. Okay, item three, which may be sent in tonight, uh, you know, routine, asking any questions or issues with respect to item three. Same with item four, these vote appear are consented in this evening, routine, asking any issues with respect to alcohol application. Sierra, item five, also appears to be sent in tonight, routine, self-absorbed, any questions or questions there? Okay, for, for mine, this is on the voting agenda tonight, the, uh, budget member, uh, was included with the drop by time, so this gets it sent in for me, the current reality, any issues or questions there? And then finally, the last item here, we're going to send it in, you know, we, we need to take care of all our business in January, the 16th, that, you know, maybe February will be the day after New Year, so there way of there. Spinning rules and not leaving on that day, and just being on the 16th, that's all extended in your mind. All right, and you got anything additional, we, we, if it was scheduled at 4:30 again, and we anticipated that, uh, we would have. We, we, if it was scheduled at four thirty again, we anticipated that, uh, we would have this robbed this year before.
Right, sure.
Yeah, and we'll obviously take care of that at this week, we do it in January the sixth. You got any further, I'm going to turn.
No, sir, just the fact that all the, uh, the redistricting will be brought before the council on Jan, on the second meeting in January with the information that I've already brought from you. You all, the certain process that will, the process will be, first of all, I will present to you all, uh, the resolution that's saying, this is my presentation. Once I present it to you, this is my recommendation, also recommendation is given to you the next day, and we'll be, I will come back to you all. Uh, you have thirty days on, at, at that time. And then when that happens, I will present to you the resolution again, ask you all to adopt what I've given you. And then once that is done, the Friday night, we will adopt the amendment as well to the, to the, uh, orders. Again, that's the process, but this, this process will begin on the, uh, second meeting in January.
Any questions about that, it's all over my statute.
Yes, sir.
Process, sorry. Yes, I'm ready. No. You got anything? All right, was there any further about that?